We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance if I'll ask everyone to please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I can ask now our clerk to do a roll call and we'll proceed with Rick Coopero's order.
Counselor Teshia.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Vega.
Here.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Sannegut.
Here.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Present.
Counselor DeJesus.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Rick Coopero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Here.
And Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Ten members present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you clerk. Counselor Rick Coopero, how do you wish to proceed?
I'd like to suspend the rules so we can go on with the presentation.
Thank you. Counselor Rick Coopero is suspending the rules. For us to start with our ceremony, I will ask our Assistant City Clerk Gabby to join us for the swearing and ceremony of our new Chelsea Fire Chief. It is an honor now to ask our official new Chelsea Fire Chief to join us at the podium for a few words.
Thank you very much. Honorable Members of the City Council, City Manager Maltees, I'd like to thank you for appointing me as the new Fire Chief of the Chelsea Fire Department. I'm truly honored and grateful for the trust and confidence that you place in me, and I understand the great responsibility that comes with this position, and I'm committed to serving to the very best of my abilities. I look forward to working collectively with city leaders, our residents, local organizations, and local business owners to ensure the highest level of service for our community. I'd just like to take a moment to thank my family, my wonderful wife Wendy. Thank you for your unwavering support and encouragement. You've played a significant role in helping me to achieve all my goals here in the Fire Department. I'm truly grateful for everything you do for our family. Thank you for always being by my side, and I couldn't have done this without you. My sons Nick, Mike, and Anthony here, as well as my mother Patricia, my brothers Kevin and Patrick, my mother-in-law Nancy. I'm truly blessed to have such incredible people by my side, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. To the officers and firefighters of the Fire Department, thank you for your hard work, dedication, and sacrifice each and every day, each and every shift that you work. I'm proud and honored to lead such a talented and dedicated team, and I look forward to working alongside each and every one of you to ensure that you have the necessary resources, training, and support needed to stay safe while working at the different hazards and emergency incidents that you respond to every shift. You know, when I started here thirty-two years ago, went by pretty fast, the city had just come out of state receivership. At that time, there were drastic cuts made to the Fire Department. Two of the four fire stations were closed. Our manpower was reduced from twenty-one men per shift to thirteen firefighters per shift. And as difficult as that made it for the Fire Department operations, it was our residents, in particular, a young family on Essex Street, who paid the, tragically paid the, and was impacted directly by the receivers' cuts. But through the years and through my career, I've watched this city persevere, rebuild, and become the thriving community it is today. We have an incredible leadership group here, which I am honored and proud to be part of. Although the Fire Department's yet to recover from the cuts that were made thirty years ago, we too will persevere. We'll continue to rebuild, and we'll find ways to overcome the new hazards we face every day. Our Fire Department has a remarkable, rich history. Together, we will honor that history, uphold the values of the department, and work tirelessly to protect and serve the residents of this community with pride and dedication. I thank you once again for this incredible opportunity. I'm ready and eager to take on the challenges that lie ahead and to serve this great city. Thank you.
Truly an honor. I would like to now open it up if any of my colleagues have any words that they would like to share. Yes, Counselor Brown, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. On behalf of District Eight, City Council member and its residents, we are grateful to have these great departments that we have here, Chief leading this department. We give you our support. I give you, pledge my support to you to continue to do the work that we've done over the last twenty years here since you've been in force. I know we are honoring some of your members tonight for the work that they do, so we are really proud of what we have in your department, and we look forward to your tenure. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Teshi.
I would also like to say we're really looking forward to, we're not strangers to the work you do already, so it's just amazing to see you move up the ranks and now have the ability to implement the security that we've seen in Chelsea and just keep on increasing that. And, you know, I'm just really honored to be able to serve in the council and be able to serve by yourself.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rick Coopero.
It will be an honor to have you as the next Fire Chief, because I think you're gonna be a great Fire Chief, and it will be all a pleasure and honor to know you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. With that being said, I will now ask for a recess. I would like my colleagues to please just step forward so that we can take a picture with our new chief, and then I'll open it up for all the loved ones, friends, and colleagues. Thank you. All right. Calling this meeting back to order as we have more firefighters that we want to celebrate this evening, I'll ask our clerk to move us on to memoriam and celebratory resolutions.
We have a resolution introduced by Council President DeJesus and all members of the City Council issuing a commendation for the firefighters responding to the structured fire at fifty and fifty-two Maverick Street. Whereas on March first, two thousand and twenty-four, after Box Seventeen was struck for a report of a porch fire at fifty Maverick Street, First Alarm Company's upon arrival faced heavy fire conditions in the rear of the building, which had extended to all three floors of the structure and spread to the exposure building at fifty-two Maverick Street, leaving occupants inside trapped. And whereas four alarms were quickly transmitted as the fire spread to two additional structures, prompting a fifth alarm assignment. And whereas, while First Alarm Company's were deploying lifesaving measures simultaneously, a mayday was transmitted when the rapidly spreading fire on floor two of fifty Maverick Street cut off two members from Ladder Company Two. And whereas Lieutenant Omar Frometa K-4, realizing members from ladder two were in trouble, transmitted a mayday, and along with firefighters Andrew Saratini, Christian Avellaneda, and Jamal Ahmed, quickly deployed a ground ladder to rescue the firefighters trapped by heavy fire and running low on air. And whereas Lieutenant Omar Frometa, firefighters Andrew Saratini, Christian Avellaneda, and Jamal Ahmed acted without hesitation in the proud tradition of the Chelsea Fire Department by assisting in the rescue of two firefighters trapped under extreme fire conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council, on behalf of the grateful residents of the City of Chelsea, commend Lieutenant Omar Frometa, firefighters Andrew Saratini, Christian Avellaneda, and Jamal Ahmed for their actions and response to the fire at fifteen and fifty-two Maverick Street on March first, two thousand and twenty-four, express profound gratitude for their efforts saving two of their fellow firefighters from extreme fire conditions, and acknowledge the Chelsea Fire Department for their tireless efforts ensuring the safety of the people of Chelsea on a daily basis.
Thank you clerk. How does the council wish to proceed? Thank you, Counselor Robinson. Do any of my colleagues wish to speak?
Madam President.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you. Thank you to all the firefighters that were named in the resolution. On behalf of the residents of District Eight, myself, we are so grateful for the sacrifices that you make to make us feel safe, the job that you do. When you run into these burning buildings, you put your safety last and you put those residents' safety first. It's my gratitude to be here tonight to thank you personally for your willingness to serve and do this job that not everyone wants to do. And not only have you done it here in Chelsea multi-time, but you've done it in other surrounding communities, and we are so grateful for your dedication, your bravery, and your, the sacrifices you make, even from your family members to go into burning fires to save others. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lisa Sannegut.
Hi. I was actually driving to the Early Learning Center when I saw the smoke and called nine-one-one and pulled over near the school, and the fire spread so quickly. We were just so nervous, and you arrived, and your work was just amazing, and we witnessed it. The school went into a soft lockdown, but traffic was organized and reorganized, and you worked so hard that day, and we thank you so very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, with that being said, I will be reading the certificates. Certificate of Recognition presented to our firefighters for acting bravely and without hesitation in the proud tradition of the Chelsea Fire Department, and for assisting in the rescue of two trapped firefighters while responding to a major structural fire at fifty and fifty-two Maverick Street on March first, two thousand and twenty-four, with profound gratitude from the Chelsea City Council and the residents of the City of Chelsea. I will ask our heroes to please join us in the front as I read your names so that we can then take a quick recess for pictures. Omar Frometa, Lieutenant of Chelsea Fire Department. Andrew Saratini, firefighter. Jamal Ahmed, firefighter. And Christian Avellaneda, another firefighter. With that being said, I will ask for a recess so that my colleagues can come down to the floor, take a picture, and then all the friends and loved ones that are here for heroes can also do the same. Just real briefly want to ask everyone if they could stay, because we are not done recognizing everyone from the fire. If you could all just please stay a few more minutes so that we can continue with our other department from dispatch.
Next, we have a resolution introduced by Council President DeJesus and all members of the City Council issuing a commendation for Emergency Operations Center staff responding to a structured fire at fifteen and fifty-two Maverick Street. Whereas on March first, two thousand and twenty-four, after receiving numerous nine-one-one calls reporting a structured fire in the area of Maverick Street, Assistant Director Dan Johnson, while covering the fire alarm dispatch position in the Emergency Communications Center, dispatched a full first alarm assignment to the area. And whereas, only minutes after the initial dispatch, the Deputy Chief on scene requested a working fire assignment and upon size up a third and fourth alarm. And whereas, without delay, Assistant Director Johnson, Supervisor Josiah Hill, Lead Dispatchers Miriam Acevedo, Sheila Lacy, and John Lobo dispatched mutual aid to the scene and requested station coverage. And whereas, several minutes after the fourth alarm, a mayday call was transmitted from a firefighter over the fire ground radio channel, leading Assistant Director Johnson to immediately refer to emergency radio procedures and inform the incident commander. And whereas, following an emergency evacuation order from the incident commander, a successful personnel accountability report was conducted. And whereas, the quick and skilled actions of the dispatchers working that day played a critical role in both successfully containing the fire and ensuring the safety of the firefighters on scene. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council, on behalf of the residents of the City of Chelsea, commend Assistant Director Dan Johnson, Supervisor Josiah Hill, Lead Dispatchers Miriam Acevedo, Sheila Lacy, and John Lobo for their actions and response to the fire at fifteen and fifty-two Maverick Street on March first, two thousand and twenty-four, and for their underappreciated work ensuring the safety of our firefighters, police officers, and residents on a daily basis.
Thank you clerk. Thank you, Counselor. Do you wish to speak?
Just again, want to thank you all for the teamwork, the dedication, as we do, the workers behind the scene coming to their aid, helping out the men and the women fight this fire. It shows the dedication that you have, the teamwork that you displayed under a very dangerous situation, but all that effort and all that teamwork, it made a winning team that night, and we didn't lose any life in those fires and stuff. And I wanted to just personally again thank you all for just being a great team. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, we will proceed. I will read the certificate and then call up the heroes for this department. And I'll give a shout out to Steve, because this department is an amazing department, and Steve, you do an amazing job at training and keeping that leadership and leading by example throughout the whole department, so thank you. First, the certificate. In commemoration of your quick and skilled actions that ensured the safety of Chelsea firefighters and helped to contain the major structural fire at fifty and fifty-two Maverick Street on March first, two thousand and twenty-four, with profound gratitude from the members of the Chelsea City Council and residents of the City of Chelsea. I will ask Josiah Hill, Supervisor of Emergency Management, to please come forward. I will ask Josiah Hill, Supervisor of Emergency Management, to please come forward. I will ask lead dispatcher Sheila Lacy. Miriam Acevedo. John Lobo. And last, Dan Johnson. All right, I will ask for a quick recess for our counselors to take a quick picture on the floor, and then loved ones and friends, please join.
Oh, thanks. I don't know.
Opening this meeting back to session, ask my colleagues to join me back on the floor. And I'll ask the clerk to please take us to the next item.
Next, we have a resolution introduced by Council President De Jesus and all members of the city council commemorating Earth Day. Whereas Earth Day, an annual event created to promote environmental action and citizenship, was founded by the late Senator Gaylord Nelson, Democrat of Wisconsin, and first celebrated April twenty-second, nineteen seventy. And whereas, after witnessing years of environmental neglect, millions of Americans gathered in cities across the nation on the first Earth Day to demand basic protections for our planet and to commit to leaving behind a healthier world for the next generation. And whereas, the first celebration of Earth Day is widely credited with launching the modern environmental movement, with nearly two hundred million people in one hundred and forty-one countries participating in Earth Day celebrations by nineteen ninety. And whereas, the voice of inaugural Earth Day participants ushered in an unparalleled period of grassroots and legislative activity that changed the way we interact with the environment, leading to the creation of the Environmental Protection Agency and passage of the legislation such as the Clean Water Act, the Clean Air Act, and the Endangered Species Act. And whereas, new and continuing challenges including climate change, polluted oceans and waterways, deforestation, and the loss of other wildlife habitats reinforce the need for adequate protections for the air we breathe, the water we drink, the land we inhabit, and the animals we live alongside. And whereas, the theme for Earth Day twenty twenty-four is Planet Versus Plastics, calling for a sixty percent reduction in the production of plastics by twenty twenty-four with the ultimate goal of building a plastic-free future for the sake of human and planetary health. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Chelsea City Council recognize April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four as Earth Day in the city of Chelsea. Affirm our collective responsibility in the global effort to protect our planet and encourage our residents to participate in community programs offered throughout the city.
Thank you, clerk. How does the council wish to proceed?
Top of the suspension, Madam President, please.
Thank you, counselor.
Just one, briefly, if I could just say, I want to thank the maker of this, um, resolution. As folks know, we're here in Chelsea, we're very cautious about the Earth Day and the celebrations. We do a lot of work here. So I'm very happy with the different organizations to, um, go out, do the cleanup throughout the year, and particularly on Earth Day. So we're very, um, aware of how important it is not only to our city, but also to our earth. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. All right, moving on to the next item.
Next, we have a resolution introduced by Councilor Vega for Autism Awareness Day. Whereas, April second was recognized internationally by the United Nations as World Autism Awareness Day in two thousand and eight. And whereas, the United Nations General Assembly called on all member states, non-governmental organizations, and the private sector to create initiatives to raise public awareness of autism. And whereas, autism is a neurodevelopmental disorder typically diagnosed during the first three years of life, marked by difficulties in social interaction, verbal and nonverbal communication. And whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention's National Health Statistics Report concluded more than four, four and four million adults are autistic. And the prevalence of autism spectrum disorder has risen to one in every forty-four children in the United States. And whereas, autism is reported to occur in all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic groups, but is four times more common among boys than among girls. And whereas, there is no cure for autism. And whereas, participation in observance in National Autism Awareness Month helps to promote awareness throughout education on the needs of this community. And whereas, autistic individuals face difficulties in their workplace due to a lack of accessibility resources for their needs. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Chelsea City Council recognize April second, twenty twenty-four as Autism Awareness Day in the city of Chelsea. Commend the family members of children with autism for their dedication and sacrifice and provide the support their children need. Urge residents to raise awareness about autism to improve early diagnosis, and calls upon all residents to build a more welcoming and inclusive community to support people with autism.
Thank you, clerk. How does the council wish to proceed? Counselor Vega?
Madam President, I would like to adopt under suspension and speak on it.
You have the floor.
I am delighted to announce that our city will be recognizing Autism Awareness Month throughout the entirety of April. As a mother of a child with autism, this cause holds profound significance to me, both personally and professionally. Navigating the journey of autism diagnosis and accessing resources for my son Achilles has been a challenging yet rewarding experience. I am immensely grateful for the unwavering support I received from my pillars during this process. From diagnosis to intervention, the outpouring of support and resources made a world of difference for my family. Today, I want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to those who have played and play a role in supporting individuals with autism and their families. To our resilient children with the special ability of autism. To the dedicated caretakers who tirelessly advocate for their needs. To the educators, social workers, and specialists who provide invaluable support. Thank you. You are all true cheerio blazers and advocates making a profound difference in our community every single day. I urge anyone, and I say this from the bottom of, of my heart because it really created a huge difference in my family. So I urge anyone who may have questions or doubts regarding autism to seek, to seek diagnosis and support. While I understand the stigma that can accompany the label of autism, I want to emphasize that this is not a disability, but a unique ability in their lifestyle. Early intervention and access to resources are paramount in enhancing language, social, and cognitive skills, and ultimately improving outcomes for individuals on the spectrum. Together, let us continue to raise awareness, fostering understanding, and celebrate the incredible diversity and abilities within our community. Your support and advocacy are invaluable, and together we can make a lasting impact. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Callie Garcia?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take a moment to thank and shout out our Chelsea Public School System, the Special Education, uh, Department, who go above and beyond every single day to care for our children across the board. So thank you. As a special education administrator myself, I know, um, it takes lots of love, passion, and dedication, and Chelsea, we have it. And so thank you, uh, to all the special education teachers across the district.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Brown?
I just want to thank my colleague, my colleague for our leadership in this cause and this awareness. Uh, it's important that we continue to bring this awareness about autism to, not only to city council meetings, as my council, um, so every year bring, but as my other fellow council stated, that we need to bring it into the schools and make them aware of it. And what autism can do and what it does do. But by making folks aware of it, it's not just the individuals, but it also helps the folks that, the families and the caretakers and those that provide for these families. So it is great that we offer the resolution here in, in City Hall. But we need to, as my colleague stated, we need to take it to our neighborhood. We need to take it to our churches. We need to take it out where we can also be advocate. And I want to thank my colleague here for being a great advocate for this year and dealing with it as she personally deals with it with her family. And thank you for just being a leader in this, and every year you bring it for this council since you've been a member. And I just want to thank you for your dedication. And again, I hope all the echoes in, uh, the conversation we have about this will let people know, you know, it's not just a stigma. It's a, it's a problem that we can play, uh, that we can help with love and kindness and understand it, what's going on when you see someone maybe stutter or someone acting out. So, um, it's very good that we recognize you on this also. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll move on. There is no public hearing this evening. We'll move on to public speaking. For anyone who's here for the public speaking portion, please, uh, state your name and your address. Um, and you may line up here by the podium. I'll also ask if you are in a group, if there is a possibility for the group to choose a few leaders to voice the opinion, that's great. If not, it's, it's your right to come up to the mic and, and share your thoughts with the council. Thank you.
Good evening, council. City manager, my name is Joan Cromwell. I live at thirty-eight Addison Street, Chelsea, Mass. And, um, I'm just here, um, because I had a burning, um, desire, thought, um, in regard to last week's special meeting. We, I couldn't be here then, but just was, um, reflecting on, um, the comments and the rhetoric in regard to the migrants that are coming, um, to Chelsea. So basically, I just wanted to say some facts. I know it'll have to be really fast because we got a long line of kids that are going to say some powerful stuff tonight. So just wanted to say US is, is home to the largest number of international migrants. Forty million people living in the US were born in another country. Two hundred and fifty thousand encounters at the Mexican border of migrants crossing into US. Here in Chelsea, we have thousands of migrants from around the world in Central America. In two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, forty-seven point two percent of Chelsea- In two thousand twenty-one, forty-seven point two percent of Chelsea members were born outside of US, and that is thirteen point six seven higher than the national average. Chelsea has declared itself a sanctuary city, which is not, which not only limits cooperation with national government and enforcing immigration law, but it also aims to enact measures that are welcoming and favorable to migrants, all migrants. Sanctuary cities undertake the responsibility of receiving and processing an influx of migrants. The influx of migrants based on humanitarian grounds under President Biden's humanitarian grounds parole include Haitians, Venezuelans, Cubans, and Nicaraguans. These individuals, mired with extreme poverty, famine, water scarcity, earthquakes, natural disasters, cholera, malaria, political unrest, murder, are forced to leave their country. So they only to come here and again to be marginalized with more abusive and racially, racial discrimination responses, reaction, and policy. I'm here to advocate for all people who come to US, including the migrants. We are a sanctuary city, and there are so many folks here that we protect that are undocumented. And here we are having one hundred families come in from a country that is war-torn, that they had to flee. I'm sure many of them not by force. And I don't really keep up with the whole conversation, but I just know that when you talk about safety and the community, honestly, we're already in a rut, and they're not even here. So we have bigger fish to fry than a hundred migrant families coming to Chelsea to transition into a better life here. And in terms of safety, there are doctors, there are lawyers, there are students, there are nurses, there are teachers that had to leave their home country. Just to have that compassion and to give that neighborly love and to respect an organizations that's stepping up to say, "We're at the helm, we will help." And whatever that means, we will hold them accountable and to be assured that they're going to be up for the task to help the families coming in. And I get housing and homelessness and food insecurities and all of the problems we already have in an overburdened bandwidth-stretched-out city, but you know what? This is what we do, and this is what we do as Americans, and this is what United States has been doing. And the rhetoric, you know, needs to stop because we did not have these conversations when tens of thousands of Ukrainian families were coming after Russia invaded Ukraine. So just basically be mindful, and I advocate for us to show some more neighborly support and support the organization that's going to step up and help process the migrants. So thank you.
Before we start, my colleague-
Real quickly, I'm sorry, just real quickly, just want to clarify, I stood up and stepped out because of the topic, not swaying anyone, no disrespect of any kind. So if anyone else will speak on the topic, if you see me stand up and step out, that's simply because of my ties with the organization and the project, okay? Thank you. You may continue.
My name is Stephen Calix, and my address is fourteen Ann East Road, and I'm here to advocate for funding for youth programs. Hello and good day to you esteemed members of City Council. My name is Stephen Calix. I am a junior attending Chelsea High School, and I'm here to share my point of view on the opioid settlement and the hundreds and thousands of dollars that will be reimbursed to many states and distributed to the municipalities for the damages and harms that prescribed medications have caused. The issue of reducing substance use and youth violence has been a major concern in our city. A way to combat this problem of youth substance and violence is to allocate funding to programs that uplift youth. Funding from the opioid settlement should be used to provide jobs to the youth of Chelsea, which can be an effective prevention method to address substance use and youth violence. By empowering youth with employment opportunities, we can divert their attention from harmful activities and pave a way for a brighter future. During the March fourth council meeting, Councilor Robinson brought up the importance of looking beyond sports and the importance of taking Chelsea youth out of Chelsea. We can do that by funding more mentorship-based programs and funding more youth employment opportunities. First, mentorship mentoring can help youth as they go through most challenging life transition, including stressful challenges faced at home or the adjustment of adulthood. Close, healthy, and supportive relationships are extremely beneficial for youth. Youth are more likely to join gangs and make poor decisions when they don't have trusted adults to turn to talk to. Watching our program supervisor being a strong father and a leader of a program for youth has taught me lessons and skills that will bring me, that will bring with me all around. Simply being in a work environment provides youth with the experience of meeting people that care and actively work towards improving the lives of youth makes an impact. We need the city to fund more programs throughout Chelsea and focus on pairing youth with strong influential mentors. We need to be able to see people like us make it out of Chelsea and thrive under new opportunities. We need to introduce our youth to influential role models and to point out the similarities between them and the role models they admire. We need to see what we can be, we need to see people we can relate, we need to see people who are authentic, people that look like us, people who talk like us, people who come from similar backgrounds and have similar challenges like us, so we can see a way out. Another important factor that I want to discuss is economic empowerment. For the youth of Chelsea, the main cause or the rooted factor towards the problem of violence and substance use is related back to money. Youth will join gangs and make poor decisions because of the needed resources. If the funds from the opioid settlement are used to fund more employment opportunities for youth, the chances of them joining gangs decreases. Funding youth employment opportunities and intentionally increasing mentorship opportunities will make it easier for youth to access money, connections, and protection.
You have one minute left.
The gift of time is a precious opportunity for teens to leverage for them to succeed. It's important for them to recognize how powerful they are and the potential they have and do whatever they set out to do. If you want to empower the youth of Chelsea, we must provide them with more mentorship opportunities, economic empowerment, and a safe haven for them to go home.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening, and thank you, everyone, for being here.
Hello. Hello, my name is Jason. I'm sixteen-year-old, and I'm from, I'm a Chelsea resident. I would like to encourage you to use the funds from the opioid settlement to fund more youth jobs, more mental health services, and increase mentorship opportunities as a way to reduce substance uses as youth violence in our city. Lately, there have been buyer shootings and stabbings in Chelsea that includes youth. A couple of weeks ago, a seventeen-year-old was shot behind Home Depot. For us, youth, for us, youth is a scary thing to have to hear constantly, but it also makes us wonder where the system went wrong with providing the youth with the shooting resources to make better choices. It also makes me reflect on my own experience. I am fortunate to have a job that provides me with safety, stability, and resources. At a sixteen-year-old, I use the money to, I receive from my job to help my family. I help my mom with bills and groceries. If my younger siblings need help, I can help them because of my job. Recently, I found myself in difficult situations where I have to make decisions that will impact my future. Although it feels daunting to make hard decisions, I have support and resources. Because of my job, during those difficult moments, I have the opportunity to turn to William Palacios and Peter Lopez for advice and guidance. That's exactly what youth shootings other youth are missing mentors, a job that provides them with resources. Using the opioid settlement to fund more youth employment opportunities will give more youth the opportunities to achieve more during the summer. La Cola Bativa receives around seven hundred applications, but only around two hundred youths are accepted. Those are two hundred who will have a safe job to go every day where they will learn professional development skills, have access to mental health, and rational activities. The rest of the youth that apply also deserve a safe job with so many teaching opportunities. The opioid settlement funds should be used to give youth employment opportunities but also mental health services and fund rational activities that youth will want to choose over being on the streets. These funds can be used to provide youth with art classes, music classes, poetry, and mental health sessions. While the city works on rebuilding a youth center, the opioid settlement funds should be used to give youth more opportunities for employment and a safe place. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jules Hernandez. I live at two forty-three Webster Avenue. I am a sixteen-year-old Chelsea resident. I attend Northeast Metro Tech High School. The opioid settlement fund should be used to fund programs centered around substance use and gain prevention through increasing mentorship, education, and extracurricular activities. The city of Chelsea should be actively working on moving funds from the opioid settlement to bring more youth employment opportunities to Chelsea. We believe funding recreational programs that include mentorship, mental health services, physical health services, art, music, various, and various life skills courses that can and will make a huge difference in life of many youth, but also in our community. I wanted to share my personal experience with how transformational it is to receive consistent mentorship and mental health services. I am currently employed at La Cola Bativa's Youth Employment Program and a member of Basement Tribe. Basement Tribe is a program fully dedicated to improving the quality of life for youth through consistent mentorship opportunities and physical health activities. Before joining LC and becoming part of Basement Tribe, I had a lot of trouble controlling my temper around others when they got me upset. I didn't know how to help myself not be overtaken by my anger. I had many difficult days where I felt like I had no support. Then I met William Palacio and Peter Lopez. They have been my biggest supporters since day one. They've always had faith in me even when I don't have faith in myself. That's what truly makes a difference in the life of youth. Having someone who believes in you won't give up on you no matter how many times you mess up. I can confidently say I've seen myself improve and grow as a person because of three main reasons: mentorship, mental health education, extracurricular activities. First, mentorship. William has given me so many chances, chances, which have helped me grow as a person. He has also helped me learn how to accept when I'm wrong and how to move past those mistakes. I've learned from my mistakes so I won't make the same mistakes in the future and possibly ruin future opportunities. Before meeting William, I did not have any goals or prioritized priorities for myself, but now that I have been working at La Cola Bativa and being a member of Basement Tribe for over a year, I've learned to build boundaries, set goals for myself, and have more priorities for my future. I prioritize my grades, basketball, and other hobbies because I was exposed to healthy adult relationships that guided me to change my mindset. I can control my temper, multitask, and can manage around things I need to get done in a good amount of time. Second, education. Education, youth on mental health, and how to create a change within yourself will make an impact. Peter Lopez has helped me by educating me on different coping strategies and identifying healthy and unhealthy behaviors. My mental health has been a lot better being able to have a safe, stable job. Lastly, extracurricular activities. I go to gym multiple times per week with Basement Tribe. I'm happier and have something to look forward to ending my day. Instead of being on the streets or making poor decisions, I'm surrounded by positive mentors and friends who care for me, even if it's just for one, two, or three hours. Those are hours that my mom doesn't have to worry about me being in trouble or getting hurt. Funding more youth jobs with the opioid settlement money will help more youth who are in gangs or in difficult situations find a different way of life. If one program can make a difference for youth, imagine if we could fund and create more programs of different interests for youth centered around mentorship. I am a clear example of what happens when you give youth the opportunities to thrive. Sometimes all it takes is one person caring about you to change the path of your life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, City Councilors. My name is Natalie Rodriguez, and I live at sixty-five Fourth Street.
Right before you start, honey, I'm gonna just announce, when I interrupt you to say one minute, it's just because we're timing it. I don't want anyone to feel weird because I'm interrupting you, okay?
Okay. Sounds good. My name is Natalie Rodriguez. I'm a freshman and I attend Chelsea High School. I wanted to share why I believe the opioid settlement should be used for youth fundings, I mean for youth funding, wait, for funding youth jobs, mental health services, mentorships, and extracurricular, oh my god, I'm nervous.
My name is Raham Macedo, and I live on three Clinton Court, Chelsea, MA. I would like to advocate for the opioid settlement funds to be used towards funding more youth employment opportunities and programs that focus on mentorship and recreational activities. And increasing youth jobs will help Chelsea improve because by providing young people with job experience, skill development, and financial independence, youth will be able to foster a sense of responsibility and accountability. I joined La Cola Bativa last summer, and I can say that working here for the short amount of time that I have, I am learning how to get past all the struggles thrown in my way and still enjoy learning new things. Everyone has, everyone has issues they're dealing with, but youth jobs can help us be in a safe environment where we learn from mistakes and help us become better people while getting life skills for the future. Youth who don't have opportunities usually start to go down rough paths, and we have more violence going on between youth. When youth don't have safe environments around them, they tend to find dangerous activities to lean onto because the people around them influence their decisions, and they don't have anyone to help them stop these bad habits. We need youth jobs to help give them mentorship so that kids that are joining gangs aren't going in the path that they shouldn't be following. We need the youth to have healthy relationships with people so that they can follow up to the expectations we have for them because we know how truly amazing they can be with just the right amount of attention. I know this is not referring to all the youth, but if we don't do anything to stop what has already affected them, the chain will just continue to grow and slowly pull all of us down. You can't take anything for granted when it comes to our children. Anything can happen in just a week. Thank you.
You know, half the people on this council pretend like you're family. Don't be sorry.
Oh my god, okay. My name is Natalie Rodriguez. I'm a freshman and attend Chelsea High School. I wanted to share why I believe opioid settlements should be used for funding youth jobs, mental health services, mentorships, and activities. If we want youth to stay away from substance and use gang and substance use and gang involvement, we need to provide them with safe jobs. Having safe jobs helps a lot because when you are in a safe environment, you are more welcome, you are more calm about who's in your surroundings, and it makes you less stressed. Improved, improved mental health will help you, will help and make it easier for youth to make better decisions. When I started high school, I really had a difficult time adjusting to a new environment, people, and expectations. My mental health was unstable. I had a difficult time eating, focusing on school, and felt depressed. My mental health, my mental health sessions provided through the Cola Bativa Mental Health Program. We, I've made a difference in my life, in my life and in many youth lives, including me. When I joined the LC, I felt like I had no one to talk to about my real problems. I felt, felt, I felt that, oh, listen, work, we can't, Peter Lopez, he has taught me how to find balance, how to find balance and improve my mental health, one step at a time. I have a little sister who I love. I've thought about my own mistakes and hope that she will receive the help she needs from a age to navigate life. If we want kids to stay away from gang substance and, from gang and substance use, the city should focus on funding, fund recreational programs for kids in middle school rather than later on, later on like high school, when many of the risk factors of substance use and mental health problems have already started. I'm asking for the opioid settlement funds to invest in you with my little sister and mine so she can, so she can be best self and not struggle as much as I did. The opioid settlement funds should be used to create youth jobs as a way to prevent- The opioid settlement funds should be used to create youth jobs as a way to prevent, to prevent youth substance, but also mental health disorder. Improved mental health means, improved mental health means less youth will turn into substance use to feel, wait, improved mental health means less youth will turn to substance use to feel okay. Programs that employ youth, provide mental health resources, and have fun programs will enhance youth's social, emotional behavior and academic growth, but also provide youth with the ability to earn money. Thank you. And I'm sorry.
My name is Samantha Cubas. My address is Two Parkway Court. For a little more than a year now, I've been part of an organization called Basement Tribe. This organization strives to help underrepresented youth avoid trouble by making the gym a passion. A lot of Chelsea's youth come together to box at Peter Welch's Gym in Dorchester on Sundays. Dedication to our boxing sessions lends us a sponsorship with Carter Park CrossFit. For me, participating in CrossFit workouts and boxing has been an emotional outlet, and it has also made me unafraid to challenge myself. It's taught me the difference between motivation and discipline. What makes this organization so special to me is the adults who lead it. Other than teaching me discipline and hard work, participating in this program and having a mentor has taught me valuable and irreplaceable life lessons. I believe that the opioid settlement should be used to bring more opportunities like this to Chelsea. Programs about music, art, gardening, and more keep youth entertained and away from negative things. That's how you make a difference in Chelsea. By giving youth more mentorship opportunities, the lives of future youth can be improved and saved. Early last year, I lost my uncle. My mentor, William, was my voice of reason during this loss and helped me gain a new perspective on my situation. Reflecting on that experience, I realized that being part of Basement Tribe helped me learn the importance of having a support system and has shaped me into a better individual overall. When I first started this program, I lacked the wisdom that I have today because I didn't have an adult in my life to guide me towards a stronger mentality. William, who has told me countless times what he wishes to do with this program and who I've seen go above and beyond for every single one of us, has been nothing short of a role model. I'm blessed to have this guidance in my life as I feel better prepared to tackle the curveballs that life throws. Overall, this program has inspired me to keep pursuing my aspirations, and I've taken the qualities I admire from the adults in my life and mirrored them. Thank you all for your time.
Hello, my name is Anisia. I live at fifty-six Hurd Street. Just wanna say good evening to everybody. I'm eighteen, I live in Chelsea, and I believe that the opioid settlement funds should be used to support and create more programs like Basement Tribe. And while I'm sure there are many other programs throughout Chelsea that would impact the lives of many youth, for me, Basement Tribe has been so much more than a youth program or even a safe space. It's about the people who donated their time and skills to us for workshops and during retreats. These are the people who showed me that I can do something more with my life, be something more, and how to do it. Sometimes all it takes is for someone on the outside, someone with the know-how, to tell you you have more options and actually show you those options. Initially, I was apprehensive. What doesn't our program have to offer me? But Basement Tribe is so much more than just spray painting murals or teaching kids how to make their own paintings from scratch. Basement Tribe taught me about healthy eating and the importance of staying active, and then we went and did those things. Coming from a place where we do a lot more talking, where we do a lot of talking without much action, this experience was jarring in the best of ways. Throughout, through workshops, retreats, and fighting together, I was able to be active and remain safe outside of home. I learned responsibility because of Basement Tribe. It took years of being a part of the program before I was given the opportunity to be a tribe leader. It was something I had to work hard to earn, showing that I could be present during workshops and accountable on Sundays. During our youth camping trip that year, I earned the responsibility of being a tribe leader and being responsible for the younger kids in our group. This gave me the, gave me purpose, but also helped me to see that I was a needed part of my community. Without the support of my Basement Tribe mentors, I'm not sure I'd be here. After COVID hit, the loneliness I felt was so great I couldn't get out of bed. For the longest time, I only left the house for Fighting Together Sundays. I hadn't realized how essential being part of Basement Tribe was to me. When we came back at full force after quarantine, I had a greater appreciation for the program as a whole. More than anything, I miss our retreats and workshops. Every month, meeting new people, hiking four thousand feet up a mountain, swimming under waterfalls. Basement Tribe at its core is about supporting the youth and truly preparing us for life. More than teaching us, William is getting us to people who can give us the tools to reach our goals. Basement Tribe has empowered me and many other youth to do more than just survive, but to strive for the future we want. Without more funding, I fear I might lose the resources that Basement Tribe has provided with, provided me with throughout the years that has shaped who I am today. I fear these experiences and connections will be lost for the next generation, and they will have to struggle alone without the foundation that Basement Tribe offers. They won't have the tools needed to see that they do have a chance, and they will continue to be lost the way that I once was and not have the opportunity to see where their abilities can take them. With the opioid settlement funds distributed through Chelsea, more youth will be able to have similar opportunities. These opportunities would improve the life of so many youth, and I can guarantee it from experience. Please consider empowering youth by funding similar programs so that all youth can have access to mentorship and activities to improve their mental health and their view of themselves as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Seeing no other speakers, I'll just briefly remind folks that during this section of the agenda, we don't typically respond to any of the comments. However, you all know that the councilors, my colleagues, are all accessible to you all. I will, I will just say that we felt the urgency tonight with your words. You were all very powerful speakers because you spoke from the heart, and I thank you for your bravery. And Will, can you raise your hand real quick? Raise your hand, Will. Raise your hand. Yeah. There were organizations mentioned, there were youth groups mentioned, but Will in particular was mentioned in each and every one of these speeches, and we are lucky to have a Chelsea native leading and supporting and mentoring these youths. So, thank you, Will. I will now ask our clerk to move us on to the next item on the agenda.
Next, we have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the city council dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Accept and file the minutes under suspension if there's no objection.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor. Moving on to communications from the city manager.
We have a copy of a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese regarding the naming of the newly acquired open space adjacent to Chelsea Street Bridge. Dear councilors, I am writing to you to share exciting progress on the city's work to create new open space on the parcel of land we acquired from the state next to the Chelsea Street Bridge. As you know, the legislature passed special legislation in twenty twenty, allowing us to purchase this property from the state specifically for use as open space. The city took possession of the property at the beginning of twenty twenty-three and has been working with members of our community to create a forward-looking design which provides our residents with shade and views of the Chelsea Creek, while also making sure the space will be prepared for the impacts of climate change. As we advance design through the permitting process, we believe it is time to name this new addition to our inventory of open space in our city. We would like to propose naming it Latimer Overlook after Lewis Howard Latimer. Mr. Latimer was born in the city of Chelsea in eighteen forty-eight, and he went on to be one of the first major African-American inventors. His parents escaped slavery in Virginia to come to Chelsea, where he was raised until being sent to a farm school with his siblings. This was the beginning of a distinguished career, which notably included drawing the blueprints for Alexander Graham Bell's telephone patent in eighteen seventy-six and improving on Thomas Edison's initial design for the electric light bulb. His improvements made incandescent light bulbs practical, affordable, and longer lasting than Edison's original invention. He went on to supervise the installation of public electric lights throughout New York, Philadelphia, Montreal, and London. Other notable inventions by Victor Latimer include the first toilet for rail cars and an early forerunner of air conditioning. It is in recognition of his extraordinary achievement and his significant contributions to our society that we propose naming this new open space Latimer Overlook.
How does the council wish to proceed?
Accept and file the communication under suspension. Something will be coming up on the new business.
Thank you, Councilor Robinson. Moving on.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese announcing of Chelsea's municipal aggregation plan, Chelsea Electricity Choice. Dear councilors, we are excited to announce the launch of Chelsea Electricity Choice, our program for municipal aggregation presented to the city council earlier this year. Chelsea received state regulatory approval for the program in December twenty twenty-three, and the program will launch this June. Chelsea has joined nearly one hundred and seventy other Massachusetts communities that already have this type of electricity program, including the city of Boston. Chelsea Electricity Choice changes the price that is used to calculate the supply charge on participants' ever-source electric bills. However, EverSource will remain Chelsea's electricity utility and will continue to deliver electricity in Chelsea, address power outages, and handling billing. The program has three options. New participants will be enrolled in the Chelsea Basic option and will receive a price of twelve dollars and forty-two cents per kilowatt hour. The Chelsea Basic price is more than four cents kilowatt lower than EverSource's current residential price of seventeen two six cents per kilowatt hour, which is in effect through July thirty-first. That translates to a savings of more than eighteen dollars per month for an average residential customer, though a future savings compared with EverSource cannot be guaranteed. Chelsea Basic provides the minimum amount of electricity from renewable sources required by law and the lowest price in the program. Two additional options provide more electricity from renewable sources and are available by request. Chelsea Standard provides electricity that's seventy-five percent from renewable sources for twelve point eight six cents per kilowatt hour. Chelsea one hundred percent green provides electricity that's one hundred percent from renewable sources for thirteen point eight six cents per kilowatt hour. Both of these prices are also lower than EverSource's current residential basic service price. The city has signed a contract with Direct Energy that will keep all Chelsea Electricity Choice prices fixed and stable until June twenty twenty-six. In comparison, Chelsea's, EverSource's basic service-
Chairman, I'd waive the rest of the reading and move to accept and file the communication under suspension if there's no objections.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Councilor Taylor, and Councilor Jimenez, you have the floor.
So, I just wanna just give a huge shout out to the city for, for this program. This is, this has been a long time coming for a program that's really gonna make a big difference to the people of the city. So, I, first of all, wanna say thank you to the city hall staff, especially the city manager, for getting this across the line and helped make sure that we're setting up this program. I'd like to give a huge shout out to Green Roots as well, because I know that they've been doing a lot of work with the, with the community, and they're gonna be doing a lot as we roll out this program. Also, a big thank you to the former councilors who first brought this, many of whom are still up here, as well as some of our, our former colleagues. Just thank you to everyone, and I just wanna make sure that people understand that the three options that were mentioned, all three of them, including the highest, highest amount of renewables, which would be a hundred percent renewables, even though that is the highest of the three rates, that rate is still lower than what EverSource is currently charging. So, it's really, really exciting. You know, people can go for, you know, if they're looking for the maximum amount of savings, they can choose that option, but also if you're really looking to, to help Chelsea be at the forefront of expanding renewable energy, you can take the, take the hundred percent option, which is what I'm hoping to do. So, really, really excited, and yeah, if anybody has any questions, please feel free to reach out to the city, but also I'm always happy to talk to anybody who, who would like to learn more about the program. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Moving on.
Next, we have a communication received from the city manager announcing a two-point-five million dollar reconnecting communities and neighborhoods grant received by the city of Chelsea. Dear councilors, I am writing to you to share exciting news that the city of Chelsea, in partnership with the city of Boston, has received an award from U.S. Department of Transportation-
Counselor Recupero would like to waive the reading, accept and file, no objections, seeing none. Moving on.
Next, we have a communication received from the city manager requesting a council subcommittee on FY twenty twenty-five water, sewer, and trash rates. Dear councilors, I am writing to-
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to waive the rest of the reading and refer this to the Ways and Means Committee, Subcommittee.
Seeing no objections, reading is being moved to Ways and Means.
Also, just real quick, we'd like to remind all of my colleagues that we are all invited to every subcommittee meeting, so even though it is a Ways and Means Subcommittee, we're all invited. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor.
Sorry, we're just accepting and filing the communication for now. Something will be coming up under new business.
Oh, will it? Okay. Sorry, apologies.
Okay. Point of clarity from our clerk. Clerk, could you clarify for us, please?
There's nothing coming up on the new business. He's requesting the Subcommittee, so all you have to do is accept and file and move it to the Subcommittee. So, your motion's correct.
Is that again?
Your motion's correct. You're just moving it to a Subcommittee. There's no order attached.
I just have a question on it. I mean, since it's going to Subcommittee and the maker has suggested that all of the city council members are welcome to attend this meeting, I just hope that it will be in a time that we can be able to make it. Normally, I know the city council Subcommittee meetings have been in the afternoon, but I know Ways and Means have been early in the morning, so just wanna be fair to the council members.
Thank you, counselor. I'm sure that Counselor Taylor-
I, I usually defer to the schedule of the city manager, so, but in, in this case, as it's, as it was, I think originally, a Subcommittee on Conference, that we can have that at a, at the six o'clock hour.
Thank you.
If that's okay with the city manager.
Love it. Look at that teamwork, guys. All right, moving on.
Next, we have a communication received from the city manager requesting approval of the appointment of Ms. Carrie Williams to the Chelsea Disability Commission. Dear councilors, pursuant to Section four dash two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individual to boards and commissions in the city for appointment to the Chelsea Disability Commission, Ms. Carrie Williams of Chelsea, for a new three-year term expiring April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-seven. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Copies of resume is attached.
Is there an order, a motion on the floor?
Second reading, anybody?
Second reading.
Send it to a second reading.
Thank you, Counselor Recupero. We're sending this to a second reading. Moving on.
Next, we have a communication received from the city manager requesting appointments to board and commissions for the Chelsea Women's Commission. Dear councilors, pursuant to Section four dash two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. We are so excited about this historic appointment. We want to thank the community for their unprecedented interest in the commission. We received an incredible amount of applicants. We know we will engage everyone who applied into this very critical work. We want to thank our Director of DEI for her swift action with this commission. Once the city council confirms these appointments, we will plan a swearing-in ceremony for the commission, as well as an open house for the community to meet its appointees. For appointment to the Women's Commission, we have the following. Ms. Jenny Mogutio of Chelsea, Ms. Emily Chadborn of Chelsea, and Ms. Diana Portillo of Chelsea for a new three-year term expiring April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-seven, as well as Ms. Lourdes Alvaro Silva of Chelsea, Ms. Deborah Washington of Chelsea, and Ms. Zaida Ismatul Oliva of Chelsea for a new two-year term expiring April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six. And for appointment to the Women's Commission, Ms. Kayla Lorbus of Chelsea for a new one-year term expiring April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Copies of resumes are attached.
Do we have a second reading? There are no objections?
Thank you, counselor. Moving to a second reading.
We have a communication received from the city manager responding to city council order twenty-four eighty-six, program to support entrepreneurs. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to council order twenty-four eighty-six requesting that the city manager look into creating a program to provide support to entrepreneurs who would like to start and grow a business in Chelsea. The city has invested in growing our business community, supporting our small businesses, and providing opportunities for residents to reach their full potential. Last week, I shared with the council an innovative program launched by our Housing and Community Development Department to support entrepreneurs interested in selling produce and food products in our city. Our law department is also working on facilitating pop-up marketplaces where our residents can sell their products without the need to have a storefront. We welcome and appreciate the council's interest in expanding the opportunities we offer to our residents. I have begun conversations with the Chamber of Commerce to look into what programs, initiatives, and support we can provide to our small businesses. I will continue these conversations, and will provide an update to the city council as we make progress on the issue.
Do you have a motion, Counselor Teshi?
Motion to accept and file under suspension of the rules if there are no objections.
Thank you, counselor. Moving on to the next.
Next, we have a communication received from the city manager responding to city council order twenty-four eighty-seven, program to provide assistance for energy bills. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to council order twenty-four eighty-six-
Madam President, I'd like to waive the rest of the reading and move to accept and file under suspension of the rules if there are no objections.
Thank you, counselor. Seeing no objections.
Next, we have a communication received from the city manager responding to city council order twenty-four ninety, shovel-ready projects. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to council order twenty-four ninety, requesting that the city manager provide a list of all construction and/or infrastructure projects considered shovel-ready. I would like to start by commending our staff for their incredible work pursuing grants and other external funding to complete the necessary infrastructure and capital work in our city. This effort is evident in our-
We hear the rest of the reading, accept and file, leave the rest of the reading.
Thank you, counselor.
Can we get a, just a list, a quick list of the projects, just for the record?
Counselor Jimenez requests a quick listing of the projects.
Projects are as follows. Projects are as follows.
For the public.
Carey, Carey Avenue, sewer separation from Washington Ave. to Broadway. Central Avenue sewer separation from Highland to Shirtlift. Market Street stormwater culvert repair replacement. Island and River. New open space on parcel next to Chelsea Street Bridge at twenty-nine Eastern Avenue. Two-twelve Congress Street. Chelsea Square. Mill Creek Projects and Eastern Avenue Resiliency and Safety Improvements.
Thank you. Moving on to-
Next, we have a communication received from the city manager responding to City Council Order twenty-four ninety-two, Code of Ordinances. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to Council Order twenty-four ninety-two requesting that the city manager provide the city council with a copy of Part Two, Chapter thirty, Article five, Division one, Section thirty, one ninety-six, Buildings, Sewers, and Connections. The order specifically-
Thank you, counselor. Seeing no objections. Moving on now to communications and petitions to the council.
We have a copy of a communication received from Chelsea resident Brianna Benoit regarding concerns with the parking pass renewal process.
Counselor Robinson?
Uh, yes, I think, also, was there a letter attached to that? Can we also have that attached to this?
Absolutely. Counselor Robinson wishes to attach the letter to the communication.
Accept and file?
Accept and file?
Accept and file the communication. Under suspension, no objections.
Thank you, counselor. All right, moving on to second readings.
We have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese, being read for the second time, requesting approval of appointments to board and commissions. Dear councilors, pursuant to Section four-dash-two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For appointment to the Historical Commission, Mr. David Vences of Chelsea for a new three-year term, and for appointment to the Cultural Council, Ms. Tawana Dean Wright of Chelsea for a new three-year term.
Counselor Recupero, you have the floor. Counselor Recupero would like to move forward with a roll-call vote.
Roll-call vote requested, a yes vote to adopt. Counselor Teshi?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Tenary Garcia, absent. Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten members in favor, zero opposed, one absent. The appointments are adopted.
Thank you, clerk. Moving on to new business.
First order of new business, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that a meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference be held to discuss the process by which the city council will hire an attorney to consult on matters as needed.
You have the floor, counselor.
This is, uh, for the benefit of the council. The council should have his own attorney to discuss whenever the council has some issues that it doesn't understand. So I believe that we should have an attorney for ourselves. The city used to have one. I don't know why they did away with it, but I believe that we should, and I believe the rest of my fellow councilors, I don't know what to say if they agree with me, but they should understand themselves that we, actually, we need one, and we should have one. Just to consult when we want something explained better than we think it's being explained, we should have one. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the city manager provide an update to the city council on the timeline for installation of Welcome to Chelsea signs near the Meridian Street and Chelsea Street Bridges.
You have the floor, counselor.
Uh, this is an ongoing thing, uh, to put signs within those two areas which don't have it, and I believe they should have it. Uh, I, the city manager sent communication telling me that we, that he's gonna do it as soon as he finds a place to put it. And more or less, uh, I seen places around the city that are on city property and are installed, and they have them. So I don't understand why, in that particular area, there's no place to put them. So if there's places that the city owns that they should put them, they should be able to put them, just like they put them in front of the police department, just like they put them. There's many of them on Carey Square, so I believe that that area should have one too, and it should be done soon, just like the rest of the city. We should all be equal. There shouldn't be any difference. The city is equal. Doesn't matter what part of the city you come from, all residents are equal regardless. So if you have them put in different places, they should put them in that place too.
Thank you, counselor. Moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the city manager instruct relevant departments to ensure residents are informed about construction-related street closures and parking restrictions.
Adopt under suspension, if there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, counselor.
This is an ongoing thing. All the time, I say about inconvenience of the people that live in our city. They do. I think the city should make a bigger effort. Our city is very small, and there's a lot of construction going on. The city should make a bigger effort to try to help the resident of our city and don't inconvenience them a lot more than they are. I know that the city doesn't have to do it. It has forty-eight hours to not to, they can take forty-eight hours before they tell the residents, this is what I'm gonna do. But maybe they should reconsider and tell the residents a little faster than forty-eight hours. Sometimes a little kindness shows, goes a long way, especially when it comes to helping the resident of the city, which is already congested. The city's congested all over the place, so if you can help them, it doesn't hurt any to try to help them understand and navigate our city better. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the city manager provide the city council the exact language in the Code of Ordinances that stipulates homeowners are responsible for costs incurred related to damage to sewer lines from the main to the sidewalk.
You have the floor, counselor.
The city manager already clarified that. There is, uh, that, that ordinance never really existed, which they said it did exist. It doesn't really exist that, that the, the people are responsible, the homeowners are responsible from their house to the top of the sidewalk where the valve is. After the valve, the city's responsible, which I was told before that they, that city wasn't responsible, but actually, the city still is responsible for that. So there's no more need to do it. So if anybody ever has any problems with their water breaking, and it has, the water is breaking after where the valve, shut-off valve is, the city is responsible for that, not you, because it's happened to some people that they had to pay. They said that it changed in two thousand and nine, but it's never really changed. So this is what's happening that, remember now, if you're a homeowner and your pipe breaks after the sidewalk, you are not responsible. The city is responsible to fix your pipe. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the city manager direct relevant departments to provide members of the city council with a parking pass to be utilized around City Hall while the counselor is performing city business to avoid parking-related violations.
I'd like, adopt under suspension, if there's no objection, and I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, counselor.
For a while, uh, the city council is, we do not want any specific favors. We don't want any extra favors. We do not want to get a pass that allows you to park all over the city. That's wrong. We don't expect to get a pass. We want the same equality as the inspectors of the city get. They get a parking pass to park. It's very hard for a city councilor to come into City Hall and find a parking spot or anywhere near it. You always end up paying tickets. So the city manager to instruct the parking, I know that the city manager can instruct them, but it doesn't mean the Parking and Traffic Commission's gonna do what he says. But it would be a nice thing to be able to come to City Hall and don't go crazy going all around the world and do your job. The job you do here is for you, the people. So we should be allowed to have at least that, where you come in, you don't have to pay all kinds of tickets and look all over the world for years, and it's, I think it's time that we at least get that. It's not a special privilege. We're not asking for a special privilege. We're just asking for the privilege to serve you, the people.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Taylor, you have the floor.
So I'd just like to add this, this one thing. Um, I would like the city to try to, like, on, on nights like tonight, where we have a city council meeting, and we have commercial vehicles from the community parking overnight in these spots before the meeting, so that people that wanna attend the meeting can't even come here, okay? So we need to really tighten up, um, the rules about parking and make it a little bit easier for councilors to come to the same, you know, to, to their own meeting, because parking is at, at such a, uh, a premium. If we allow this to happen, it's gonna happen, and, uh, and, and really, um, wh- when there's nowhere to park, there's nowhere to park, and councilors need to have access to City Hall for council meetings and for other times that they come here to conduct business. I myself have received tickets for being outside too long because I'm conducting a Subcommittee meeting, and, uh, there's nowhere else to park. So this needs to get fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that a meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference be held with the city solicitor and parking clerk to discuss potential changes to the Charter of the City of Chelsea related to the Traffic and Parking Commission.
Counselor, you have the floor.
I think this order, it ne- it needs to, to change in some ways. I never heard of, uh, the way they conduct business here. For one, you have more city officials than you do residents within that board. There's four and there's only three, and I never heard, they say, we have the final say on what they say, but actually, they have the final say on what we say. It's reversed, because for one, you send them an order, okay? You do the business of the people. Any orders you send to them, it's because the people ask you to do it for them. So when you send it to them, they have the right to not even, they look at it and don't even have to come up to us. It doesn't have to come up to us. They can reject that automatic. So if we have the final say, we have no say. If not, if something we bring up comes up and we don't even see it, so how do we have the final say? So actually, they have the final say on what we say. So what I'm try, what I, what I would like this body to do is give us a say, that when we send something to them, they look at it and say, we advise you, this is what's good and this is what's bad, and then leave the choice to us, because we are supposedly the final say. So if we are the final say and we can't say on what they say, what is the point? There is no point. The point is that the council should be the final say on what they say. It shouldn't be no say on what they say. Do you, does that make sense to you? Put, let me put it in easy terms. This is the easy way it goes. We say, we want this. They say, no, you can't have it, and we can't say yes or no. It shouldn't be that way, because the council is the representative of the people. So if you can't represent the people, what are you representing? The, the main thing is, you elect us to represent you. If we can't represent you the way we're supposed to represent you, you have no representation. That's the fa- final say. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Jimenez?
Um, just wanna quickly, um, with regards to this, I think what would be helpful, um, as we're going into this, is to make sure that, um, I don't know what parts of amending the charter have to go through the city versus what needs to go through, um, a home rule petition. So if we could just, either prior to the meeting or at that meeting, just have a, make sure that we have an overview of what exactly we can do without having to submit it to the State House, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order requesting the city manager name the Washington Avenue overpass between County Road and Reynolds Avenue after Chelsea Police Detective Scott Conley.
We will move into a roll-call vote. Seeing no objections.
Can I speak on it?
Yes.
This gentleman was a, a Chelsea resident, a Chelsea-born person. He lived here most of his life until he became a police officer. He was a very great police officer, a good human being. He worked fairly for everybody. He wasn't prejudiced, he wasn't racist, he was, he was just a person that you can go and talk to. I known him for many, many years, since he first started, and he, his life was cut short, he died young. And, um, he should be, not only was he a police officer, he was also a veteran. He was a war veteran, so he deserves some kind of recognition in the hometown where he was born. And it's not a bad thing to give someone that really deserves it. I thank all, everybody, and, uh, I hope that everybody votes in favor of giving this wonderful person a name that his children can always remember, say, that was my pops.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll move on to a roll-call.
Roll-call vote requested, a yes vote to adopt. Counselor Teshi?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Tenary Garcia is absent. Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent. The order is adopted.
Thank you, clerk. Moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Robinson. Order that a meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference be held with the city manager, police chief, and fire chief to discuss staffing issues with the police department and fire department.
Counselor Robinson?
Adopt the shenanigans under suspension, no, no objections.
Should this be referred to the Labor Subcommittee or to the Public Safety Subcommittee? I'm curious if-
I believe it should be the Committee on Conference, so everybody can participate in the conference.
Right, just-
The goal of the Subcommittee will have difficulty in city councils showing up.
Just wanna reiterate, uh, my call to everyone to use our Subcommittee structure that we have created. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no motion, we'll move on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President DeJesus regarding the designation of parcels at fifteen and twenty-nine Eastern Avenue as Latimer Overlook. Whereas the city owns the parcels located at twenty-nine and fifteen Eastern Avenues and documented as parcel IDs fifteen-five and fifteen-four, catalogued under book number six-eight-six-nine-seven and page thirty-nine on the City Assessor's Maps. And whereas this property was sold to the city by the Commonwealth on the condition that it be used as open space in perpetuity in Mass. General Law statute twenty-twenty, Chapter two-seventy-four. And whereas the city's priorities detailed in the twenty-seventeen through twenty-twenty-four Open Space and Recreation Plan include taking advantage of Chelsea's waterfront and scenic resources, as this park will do, and integrating the open space system into the fabric of the city. And whereas this area carries significant pedestrian traffic between Chelsea and East Boston and is the southern terminus of the Chelsea Greenway. And whereas the new open space, in addition to providing scenic views and passive recreational space, will provide flood storage for waters from Chelsea Creek and help to make Eastern Avenue more resilient to flooding. And whereas the city, through the Department of Housing and Community Development, intends to construct passive open space on this site, providing scenic views of the Chelsea Creek and pursue grant applications to fund the same. And whereas Louis Howard Latimer was a Howard native of the city of Chelsea who went on to be one of the first and great Black inventors and to make substantial contributions to our society's technological advancement. And whereas Mr. Latimer is not already recognized on the streets or parks of Chelsea and should be appropriately recognized and celebrated for his contributions. Now therefore be it ordered that by this vote, Chelsea City Council names the parcels at fifteen and twenty-nine Eastern Avenue Latimer Overlook and directs the city manager to take any and all necessary action to advance the creation of passive open space at this site.
Thank you, clerk. This order has been a long time coming. I would like our Counselor Robinson to please, uh, proceed with the motion and if you'd like to share any words.
Uh, actually, I'd like to ask for a roll-call vote on the adoption. I, I know, as everybody knows, been a big advocate in regards to Louis Latimer and that wonderful, uh, long relationship with his granddaughter, who was a doctor of social work. I think this is long overdue, uh, within our city to be able to recognize people that made great contributions in our country. So that's for a roll-call vote on the adoption.
Thank you, counselor. If we have any other speakers, should we proceed with the speakers now? Counselor Brown?
Yes, um, I'm gonna ask for, um, a courtesy of just an amendment of the order. Um, I actually, and I spoke to Counsel Robinson about this, um, and just told him that what I thought was more appropriate as we look forward to the four-hundred years and also the celebration and also what we, as folks, have done, particularly African-Americans in the city of Chelsea. I think the name of this should be the full name, Louis Howard Latimer Overlook. I think by just calling it the Latimer Overlook, you take something away from it, and folks are not really familiar with Latimer Overlook, but I think that it's a disservice, and I appreciate the spirit of it, but no, with no disrespect, I think we should honor him by having his name say Louis Howard Latimer Overlook. So I'm asking the city manager if we can move in that direction and have it read Louis Howard Latimer Overlook. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Moving forward with the amendment. Thank you. Okay, we can proceed with a roll-call vote on the amended order.
The roll-call vote is on adoption of the order as amended. Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Teshi?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Tenary Garcia is absent. Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent. The order is adopted. And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent. The order is adopted as amended.
Thank you, clerk. Moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Jimenez Rivera, received late.
Counselor Jimenez.
Any objections?
Are there any objections to the order? Okay. Counselor Jimenez, would you like to speak?
Yeah. Read the order.
Order introduced by Counselor Jimenez Rivera, order that a meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference be held with relevant staff from La Colaborativa to discuss their implementation of the plan by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to open an overflow shelter for migrants on the side of the Chelsea Veterans Home.
Um, I'd like to, uh, yeah, sorry, what, what do I need to, to do? Sorry, I blanked, because I'm just ready to, I, I'd like to speak on the order.
To suspend the rules and proceed.
Adopt under unanimous, there we go, sorry. I'd like to adopt under unanimous consent, and I'd like to speak. Apologies. Um, so, last Thursday, we had a meeting on the plan to bring one hundred families to the Soldiers' Home, uh, up, up in the, uh, the building that is now vacant at the Soldiers' Home. Um, as part of that, uh, meeting, the Commonwealth is in charge of determining who would present during the, during the panel that they were coming. Um, they had included La Colaborativa staff as the implementer of the plan, um, and by the time the meeting was called, I believe the vendor had not even yet been identified, um, but then, uh, by the time of the meeting, they had been, so that's why, um, the, La Colaborativa was there. During the meeting, uh, we were told initially that there would be a panel by the Commonwealth staff first, and then another by La Colaborativa staff, um, and then although there was no objection at that point, confusion later in the meeting resulted in that panel not being held. Uh, I know that there are counselors who had questions, there are community members who want to know how this is gonna impact them, and so I would like to, would like us to make sure that we have this conversation as soon as possible, so that the community can have a full understanding of what the services are gonna be and how it's all gonna look from the perspective of the provider. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Vega.
Um, I would like to take a moment and also speak on it.
You have the floor.
Um, and I wanna take a moment before, um, I speak on it to give full disclosure that I am the daughter of Gladys Vega, the exec- executive director of La Colaborativa. Um, to clarify, as my, um, colleague just mentioned, this is, La Colaborativa is the service provider that the governor's office chose, um, to provide services, um, at, at the shelter in Soldiers' Home. Having that, so, I just, full disclaimer and being transparent. Um, with that being said, I also, to clarify, like, we as a city council had no decision power over that, you know? Um, having that said, I support the late order submitted by my colleague, Counselor Jimenez. As the district counselor, I am appalled at what occurred in our special meeting last week. The decision taken by the chairman at the time does not exemplify transparency and denied access to vital information to my constituents in our community as a whole. I want to ensure that my constituents and my neighbors know that my goal is to provide transparency, which is why I invite you all to a community meeting that I am holding April tenth at six P.M. in Soldiers' Home. Um, I will share details on the city website, um, and I will also be canvassing my neighborhood. I invite, you know, anyone, um, who is available to come with me in Dornoch. Um, I think that this is extremely important, and there's a lot of unknowns here, and, um, having that said, this is extremely important for us to be informed as well as our constituents.
Thank you for the comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
For the record. Perfect example, if we have rules, we need to follow the rules. And if we don't follow the rules, what kind of body are we gonna have here? Okay? And I made it very clear at the meeting, I followed what was on the agenda, and that's what I was going by, on the agenda. Like tonight, we had a late communication. It was red. Violation of our rules, all right? I didn't object to it, just so that we understand, we do have rules, we need to follow the rules. And if we're not gonna follow the rules, there's no sense in being a body up here.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, just following up on the counselor's, um, uh, words about the rules of this body, um, I wanted to, last Thursday, I wanted to, to speak and ask questions of the panel, and our rules state that the chair really should not speak from the chair. So I gave up the chair to come ask my questions, and, um, and, and so the, the, the rules also state that once you give up the chair, the chair then has the right to keep that chair unless he willingly gives that up. So, um, there was a difference of opinion about the open meeting law and, and the counselor's right that the, the chair makes that determination. So for anybody that was confused about how the, we were all a little confused, um, but, uh, we do, we do have rules and we do need to abide by those rules, um, and, and in the end, the chair makes the determination of those rules. Um, if, if there is also another rule that says that anybody can challenge the ruling of the chair, and so in the future, we can challenge the ruling of the chair, which I, I believe is what Counselor Tej was, uh, was, was attempting to do, but at any rate, uh, in the future, um, hopefully it will be clear to everybody. I look forward to hearing, uh, how the, uh, the vendor is going to, uh, implement those services. I think the entire community would like to know about that. Um, so I look forward to that, uh, to that Subcommittee and, uh, really doing the business of the city, which, which we can try to do with a little less, um, you know, controversy, I suppose. So, thank you very much.
Are there any other comments from what? Go ahead, Counselor Jimenez.
Just like to really quickly, um, a few minutes ago, it was hinted at that the accepting of a late file is a breaking of our rules. Our rules do allow for late files, so we did follow the proper procedure in accepting a late file, a late order.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Again, li- regarding to last Thursday night, I think a lot of us, if not all of us, we were a little embarrassed about what happened at the end of the meeting. Um, I truly believe there was no malice, um, on either side of arguments that we had. There was some confusion. It was a long night. Um, we had already probably been into that meeting about two hours. Um, I spoke to, um, a few council members, um, mm, and just trying to see if we can get clarity of what we were doing. There was a lot of discussion mentioned prior to the meeting, but there was not a lot of, we had one issue before it in writing, and our rules were to go forward. Um, if we would've allowed, uh, the collaborative to speak last week, I don't believe we would've been seriously heard, it was hard, but again, that's not what we, um, did that night, and I, again, I apologize to my constituents, and again, um, our body now have a, a, um, order tonight to give us that, what, that feedback that we, we were trying to get last week by having a Subcommittee and having the subcontractor come in and ex, probably answer some of the questions that we wanted to get answered last week. But the state came in, they did a very great job of, um, breaking down every concern that we had. Um, I know some council members was asking certain things, but they also left us with a, 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 a slideshow, um, which was very helpful, and if you haven't read that or looked at that, it pretty much covered everything. They talked about how much money a student would get, um, what areas, what was going, our concerns, you know, my, I speak for me now. My concerns was, you know, the providers and what the service would be provided to make sure that the residents that were coming there would be very well taken care of under the services and stuff, so, um, it was a difficult night, it was a long night, um, some of us was overheated, but, you know, these things happen here, but I think we can pu- move past this and get back to the work and be able to work with the groups that's gonna make that happen up there with the state. Um, thank you.
See no more comments from the body. Uh, we will now move on to, uh, public announcements. Counselor Taylor.
So I just wanna remind everybody that tomorrow night is our, uh, initial Subcommittee meeting on youth sports at the Williams School at seven o'clock. So I wanna invite everybody to come. This, this first meeting will be, uh, to try to let everybody come and give their, uh, input on, uh, on if you have ideas or how you want things to go. We wanna be, um, uh, we wanna include everybody's ideas, at least, uh, have an opportunity for people to speak, and, uh, and, uh, we wanna, we really wanna get this problem solved so that our youth, um, can really take advantage of good quality sports in the, in the city. And so you don't, you won't have to go to Malden, or Everett, or Revere, um, or Winthrop to, uh, to participate in, in Little League, or Pop Warner Football, or Martial Arts. So I encourage everybody to come tomorrow to the Williams School at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Counselor Robinson? Oh, moment of silence. Go ahead.
Um, I know that, um, today we already did, um, national or autism awareness month resolution, but tomorrow is World Autism Awareness Day. Um, so obviously, I wanna give a shout out to all the families, um, and our children that are impacted by autism. I also, um, want to extend personally my support to those families impacted by, um, this, and I, I wanna say this also, um, so, I wanna give my phone number. Um, I'll, I know it's already, you know, you can Google me and get the phone number, but, you know, my cell phone number is eight-five-seven-two-four-one-zero-zero-two-six. Um, and I'm giving this, if you have any doubt, concerns, please feel free to call me. Um, on a, on a personal level, I can speak on how difficult it was, and, you know, my peer here and sister, um, Kelly, was one of my pillars, who attended all these meetings with me and appointments, um, to ensure that my son was able to get access to all these resources. Um, so I'm just putting it out there and, and, you know, and being, uh, a vessel of support to our families. Um, I also wanna say partially, my Spanish is not very good-looking, so I'm gonna try to say it in Spanish. Um, este, para mi fami- yes. Para mi familia, um, mi familia de Chelsea, les urjo que si tienen cualquier dudas o preguntas con, que tienen que ver con autismo. Si piensas que tu niño tiene, tu niña tiene autismo, o un familiar, o alguien que usted conoce, por favor, no tenga duda de buscar los servicios necesarios y la ayuda, porque el apoyo es sumamente importante. Y yo sé que especialmente en nuestra cultura eso es algo que, que tiene un tema, no sé cómo decir eso en español, pero este, como es, como si es algo negativo, y en realidad mi niño, las personas que lo conocen, ha sido una bendición para mí y para nuestra familia en mi vida. Um, diciéndole eso, yo quiero compartirle mi número de teléfono para todos esos familiares y las personas que si tienen cualquier pregunta y necesitan apoyo. Yo soy una madre y que, y me gustaría apoyarles en abogar por esa necesidad. Um, so mi número es ocho cinco siete dos cuatro uno cero cero veintiséis, por favor, llámame, y yo estoy aquí disponible para ustedes. Muchísimas gracias.
Counselor Robinson?
Just a moment of silence for a longtime Chelsea resident who was a twin, Keithy and Kevin Mahon, who battled, um, the virus for the beginning of time until his passing, which was, uh, services were held on Saturday at Walter's Funeral Home.
Meeting adjourned.